Yes, I'm off.
Okay, please go ahead and take over and start the Housing Authority meeting.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please give Lisa a roll call.
Commissioner Beckles. Commissioner Beckles is absent. Commissioner Brightigan?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Deidre Wynn? Commissioner Tuha Wynn?
Yes, sir, bye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Here.
Commissioner Solorio? Commissioner Solorio is absent. Vice Chair Kim Wynn?
Here.
Chair Bowie?
Here. Madam Clerk, anyone? Anyone would like to speak under the public comment? Do you have any card?
Would you like to speak under Housing?
Specifically for Housing.
No speakers.
For Housing, yes. Okay. I then will close the public communication.
No speakers under oral communications or public comments.
And now we move to consent calendar.
I'll move the balance. I'll move the balance, this is Jones.
I'm sorry, who was?
I'll say.
Who moved it?
Okay, Steve, Madam Clerk, go for the vote.
Commissioner Brightigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. I don't have the, I just lost my laptop. It crashed on me, so I don't have access to the agenda. But it seemed like there is item number 3A, which will be a joint action item with the City Council. And Mayor Jones, do you have access to the agenda? Is that, do I miss anything?
No, you're correct, that's the only item for consideration, is 3A. And that is a joint action with the City Council, so if we can go ahead and take, take that item. Do we have to take it separately, or we listen to it and then we do two of those? Okay, go ahead, is there any presentation on this?
Yes, there is, Danny Wynn is here.
Hello, this is Danny, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, chairmen and commissioners. On March 27, 2020, Congress enacted the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or CARES Act, to provide additional funding to prepare to respond to the coronavirus. This includes funding to housing authorities to maintain normal operations and take other necessary actions during the period of housing choice voucher program is impacted by the coronavirus. In May, through the CARES Act, the Garden Grove Housing Authority received over $517,000 in administrative fee funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Under CARES, this funding may only be used for two purposes. One is any currently eligible housing choice voucher program administrative cost during the period that the program is impacted by coronavirus. And two, new coronavirus-related activities, including activities to support and maintain the health and safety of assisted individuals and families, and costs related to the retention and support of participating owners. Some eligible coronavirus-related activities include: necessary upgrades to IT or computer systems to enhance telework capacity; overtime pay to housing authority staff to carry out program responsibilities; cost of providing childcare for staff that would not have otherwise been incurred; purchase of cleaning supplies and personal protective equipment; and other costs determined eligible on a case-by-case basis. The period of the availability of these funds is through the end of calendar year 2020. If the funds are not expended by the end of the year, they must be remitted to us. Staff is currently preparing a plan that corresponds with the eligible spending categories to ensure funds are fully utilized and appropriately spent. Staff recommends that the Housing Authority and City Council recognize and appropriate the $517,312 in housing authority administrative fee funding from the CARES Act. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Go ahead, Pat. I was on mute, okay. Questions, colleagues? Okay, there are no questions. No questions, so Madam Clerk, is there anyone who, from the audience, that want to speak on this issue?
No.
I would like to, any actual motion in a second. I'll move the.
Councilmember Kim Wynn will begin.
Okay, Madam Clerk, go for the vote.
Commissioner Brightigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. I believe that is the only item, so now we move on to matter from the housing commissioners. Okay. Hearing none, I now adjourn the council meeting meeting, and return back to the City Council. Mayor Jones?
Thank you, Pat, we'll reconvene the City Council, and let me ask the clerk to call roll for City Council.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Let me remind everyone before we get started to stay on mute unless you're going to be speaking. And when you do speak, please state your name for the record. May I ask Councilmember Stephanie Klaufenstein to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Stephanie, you there? Are you muted?
Sorry, I'm here, sorry.
Were you warming up?
I pledge allegiance, sorry, yeah. I was thinking about singing, but, um, okay, ready to begin. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Can we get a rain check on the National Anthem for next minute?
Yes, yes, yes.
Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications received? Or oral communications?
We do, we have one letter that was received from Cesar Covarubias from the Kennedy Commission, and this is regarding evictions of Garden Grove small businesses by V8 Investments LLC. This was received today at 3:00, and it will be uploaded to the city's website. We also received, at 6:00 tonight, we did receive numerous documents from Mr. Nicholas Dibs, and this is regarding good wellness and mental health. And those documents were also forwarded to the City Council. And those are the only written, the written communications that I received this today.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak that's there in person?
Yes, we have Mr. Craig Durfee. And after that, we have Mr. Nicholas Dibs.
Okay, great, well, please set a three-minute timer, and let's go ahead and get started with Craig Durfee.
Set three.
Counsel, my name is Craig Durfee. I wrote communication on the last Monday on the issue of February 12. I reached out to the commander yesterday in email. He hasn't heard from the council. And I'd like to bring that to your attention, that we're in stage two going to three, so I don't think that's the issue. I do have a quote from Daniel Washington. "As you grow older, you will discover that you have two hands, one for helping yourself and one for helping others." So I'm gonna play.
I would thank you, Mr. Jeff Gallegos, for, from the post 555, the Legion 555. And a few weeks ago, when Mr. Craig Durfee had commented and suggested that we, he would like to have a World of Memorial, I told him that we cannot just jump on the, on the good idea. We need to have the, you know, the veterans group or the, or the US military to, to support that. And I think that's, I thank you for you to reach out to the post 555. Now that we have the support, I think what I would like to do is, you know, I don't know whether we need, we need something to put on the agenda or whether we need to put it on the agenda. But with your permission, I would like to talk to the, you know, the veterans at the 555 Legion Post and see where we could go from here. And based on that input, I will maybe come back at the council next week, I mean, next City Council, and see if we, you know, need to decide whether we can involve staff to move forward with that project.
You know, hey, councilman, if I could just chime in, if you do have that meeting, if you'd like staff to be there for that meeting, just let us know. And if that's the right time, and we'll, we'll coordinate with you. Or if you want to wait, bring staff in later. Thank you.
Now, counsel, we go further with the councilman, Brent, said the nonprofit. I chiming in, you can go to my Facebook page or my webpage for the world to hear. It's obviously that there have a letter after that from the Los Angeles 716. And then I get a letter from Quixilla, send it to you as a counsel. What I'm confused is why are we having a challenge to get it on the agenda and honor the request of our community? And your Purple Heart, as a former councilman with Dalton, the first city to be Purple Heart, I have not heard anything from this council. I have history of this city. You can go to my Facebook page, or you go to Craig Durfee, and you go to the social media posts on their GD period concept, and there's history there. And for the mayor, there is a comment, a public comment on my blog, and there are questions to ask her, sir. So I've done the history.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Nick Dibs, please.
Mayor Jones, I have a question, there's only two of us speaking tonight. Why are we limited to three minutes? And not five?
That's just become our norm, sir.
Well, it was five minutes at the last council meeting, so I don't know why it's changed all of a sudden when there's only two of us here. I'd like to speak on, so my three minutes, I'd like it to start right now, please. On consent item 2A for tonight's meeting, adoption of a proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Last year, I brought, first off, my name's Nicholas Dibs. I'm a Pacifica High School honors graduate and a credentialed science teacher. I brought up last year some resources, but due to the COVID-19 problems and other issues with, with the mental health wellness, health and mental wellness of our young people, I have emailed the clerk and each of you, and, and I've asked that it be included in the city's webpage for my public comments, because there's several resources there to help, to help the council members and the community. One being 21 apps, parents should know about avoiding problems. The, the book titled Glow Kids by Dr. Nicholas Carderas. And then some other items as well, including preventing bullying through moral engagement, Blue Light Awareness Week, passed by the California State Senate. And then articles from the Orange County Register regarding teen suicide, high school and middle school teen suicides, and preventing bullying, and the book Disconnected to Help Parents. So in the limited time I have, there's no way I can cover all that, and so I asked to the clerk to please include that, and the community members and citizens can see that on the webpage after it's posted. The second item I'd like to speak on is item 4A under, in tonight's agenda, regarding the temporary outdoor dining permit for restaurants. Seems like a great idea. The only problem is, I checked with a local restaurant owner, and he said there's a $250 permit fee. In light of the problems that the restaurants are having, I would ask that the city please consider lowering that fee temporarily or not, or waiving it altogether, so that the restaurants can afford to utilize the outdoor dining space immediately adjacent to their restaurants. So that's a request that I'd ask you to please undertake. And then my message to the class of 2020 is also in the attachment, and I'll, I don't have much time left, but I'm just gonna say, because yesterday was Memorial Day, it's very important that we learn history so that we don't repeat the mistakes of the past. When I say we, we as a country, we as a nation, and our communities and individuals. So blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God from the Book of Matthew. And then in my letter, I reference Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s speech titled Beyond Vietnam, and an attachment that was written back in January 15, 2019, titled, also dealing with Martin Luther King Jr. And so I think people will find those, that seven-page speech and the attached article most interesting and historical, especially at this time of year when we remember in Memorial Day the sacrifices that our veterans and our citizens have made for our country. How much time do I have, Madam Clerk? Okay, so let me just start off by saying to the class of 2020, "Please accept my sincere congratulations and personal recommendations and advice in recognition and honor of the special milestone achievement you have earned, graduation." Someone once said, "When you discover a job and career you enjoy doing, you will never work a day in your life." As such, my first recommendation and advice to you is to choose jobs and careers you enjoy doing. And also, secondly, that you please devote your talents and abilities and your precious lifetime of work hours, 80,000 work hours estimated, working in a career to help achieve much-needed positive change, because it is the right thing to do for each of us. And this means working to help achieve a better future by helping others, your community, city, nation, and the world to be better than you found it. This also means putting people's welfare and the greater good of individuals and humanity ahead of greed, corruption, and unfair and unethical results and outcomes. So thank you for listening, council members and citizens of Garden Grove. Please check the city's website, and you can read these informative and helpful resources to help promote mental health wellness according to the city's proclamation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Madam Clerk, anyone else there to speak?
No, but I understand.
No, but I understand from Councilmember Kim Wynn that there was some emails that were sent. Those did not make it to my, to my email address, at cityclerk@ggcity.org. If she wants to forward those to me, we can get those posted online tomorrow morning.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
We will close oral communications. And next, we will recess over to conduct the successor agency. Madam Clerk, can you call roll for successor agency?
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidre Wynn? Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wynn?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, that takes us to oral communications, which we already did simultaneously with City Council. So we move on to consent items, just 2A, receiving file of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
O'Neill, move it.
Klaufenstein, second, please, a second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Brightigan?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Reminder to please mute, because we got some background traffic noise or something going on there. Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn over to Sanitary District, and I'll hand it back over to Councilmember Bowie.
Madam Clerk, could you please roll call?
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wynn?
Here.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here.
President Bowie?
Here. Do I have a motion and a second for consent items?
So move, George.
O'Neill, second.
Please call for the vote.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
O'Neill.
Member Brightigan?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neill?
Yes.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. Any matters from the council? Hearing none, and I throw the meetings back to the City Council.
Thank you, we'll reconvene City Council and move on to consent items. It's recommended that items 2A through 2K be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Do I have any requests to pull? Do I have a motion for the balance?
I move the motion. Stop, Bowie.
O'Neill, second.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. We already did item 3A in conjunction with the housing agency. So there are no other items for consideration, so that takes us on to four, which is matters from City Council members. We do have an agendized item 4A, which is a Coronavirus Emergency Operation Command update presented by City Manager Scott Files.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments, and then we'll go into the presentations that we have. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't say it was, it was fairly strange this weekend, not having the Strawberry Festival in full swing with everything going on. And I thought about it a lot over the weekend and the different days, and it was just kind of sad. I was very happy, and I hope people in the community got a chance to watch our GGTV3 team replay some of the parade highlights from 1988, which was a nice touch on their part to try and recreate some of that. So, and I'm sure they'll be replaying it some more if you get a chance to watch that. Just a couple of brief comments. On May 23rd, which was Saturday, the state approved the County of Orange's reopening plan for our movement into stage two of the state's reopening plan. So that was critical to those businesses, especially restaurants, that were able to allow dine-in restaurant services, and also retailers that are able to provide, that were able to issue the, comply with the social guidance rules necessary so that they wouldn't be restricted just to drive up and pick up, pick up services. So I know our Economic Development Director and Assistant City Manager Lisa Kim is going to talk about our Jobs First program and our outdoor dining program in just a minute. So she'll have more details about all of that. You will see, and we again remind people to go to the Orange County website for all the guidance, the guidelines for different industrial sectors that, that they've issued on how to reopen in compliance with the Orange County Healthcare Agency's guidelines and orders that they have in place. And I will remind the council members, on Friday, we also, on Thursday, we signed an executive order, I signed an executive order, putting in place the outdoor dining program in place. And in just a minute, you'll be asked to consider ratifying that executive order so that it can be fully in place for our small business restaurants. I do want to mention that there was more news today out of the state of California with the, with the governor announcing that he was taking further steps to help the economy move to stage three of the reopening, state's reopening plan. That included some new guidance for reopening barber shops and hair salons. And we'll be posting the county's guidance on that as soon as we are able to get that on our website. And of course, people can go to the state of California's coronavirus website to find that latest guidance that's also been established. And then there, there was also, excuse me, there was also announcement about how theme parks can move into stage three. And that's of particular importance to us, of course, for Disneyland, Knott's Berry Farm, for how those venues can reopen. And I think when I read some comments by the governor, the comment was made that that could happen not within six months or three months, but even within a month. So it will, of course, be up to those, to both, both of those businesses and parks when, when they're ready to open. But it was good news to see some of that guidance come out. A couple of just next steps that I want to mention. We, we're going to continue to monitor all of this guidance. We expect to get more information from the state about churches reopening.
That could come out. That, that information could come out sometime this, this week. And as soon as we get information about places of worship opening, we'll be sure to get that out for churches, temples, mosques. We've gotten questions about that, so we want to make sure that information gets out as soon as possible. Something else I'd like council members to start thinking about and sharing their thoughts with me. We still have our suspension of street sweeping citations and a suspension of water shut-off penalties in place. We're starting to give some thought, especially in terms of street sweeping citations. when that suspension should end as we're moving into stage two and stage three. Some of our thinking from the administration at this point is it would probably be good in sometime in June to start giving people at least a couple of weeks' notice of when that suspension of street sweeping citations will end. You know, as some cars and vehicles have remained unmoved for quite some time, it does lend to the need for sanitation and EPA guidelines to get in there and get some of our streets swept. So maybe over the course of the next week or so, I'll appreciate any of your thoughts about that and what you're thinking about, because we're going to have to make some decisions about that fairly soon, I would think. And then finally, I do want to mention and remind people that are listening. Our next council meeting on June 9th, we will resume in-person council meetings at our CMC. We will, our council chambers itself are pretty, are fairly tight quarters. And so we are going to be setting up Committee Room A and B in the CMC chambers for council meetings. It'll give us a lot more room for people to spread out and observe social distancing. Masks will be required to be worn to come in and attend the council meeting. But we're getting ready to have the CMC ready for a council meeting at our next meeting on June 9th. And we still would, our meetings will still be televised and can be streamed live and watched, just as you always can do that. So for people that are not comfortable still coming out into public venues for meetings, that'll certainly be available for folks. And, you know, we would probably encourage, if you're not intensely desperate to come to one of our council meetings, you know, we would encourage you to continue to watch our meetings online if you so choose. So with those comments, we want, we have three items we want you to, we want to follow up on. As I said, Lisa Kim will give an update on a couple of the programs that she's having. Then we'll, I'll have the city attorney talk briefly about the executive order and why that's an action item on the calendar. And then at the end, we'll turn to Patricia Song, who will give us her fourth financial analysis and report on where we stand from her perspective. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Lisa Kim for her remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Lisa Kim, Assistant City Manager. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, sure can.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update of our business resources that was put in place to assist our local garden growth businesses with their roadmap to reopening. The first update will highlight the Jobs First program. Just by way of background, we launched this program approximately two weeks ago, and it provided for grants and loans to our small business community. To date, we have approximately 30 applications in various stages of the application process. 25 of those applications are what we would call pending, meaning the applicant, the small business, still owes some information as part of the submittal process. Three of those applications are in some form of staff review or underwriting. And one of those applications have been reviewed, approved, and we are preparing the execution of the grant documents. I thought this would be a good opportunity to share a little story about this applicant that received the first grant award. Pre-COVID-19, this local garden growth restaurant employed 17 employees. During COVID-19, the workforce was reduced to four employees. With dining restaurants reopening in Orange County, this local garden growth restaurant anticipates bringing back all 17 jobs, and our grant program will assist in those job retention efforts. Our Jobs First program is a first-come, first-served basis. We are monitoring the application submittal process. And when we reach close to funding being exhausted, we will close our online portal. So that gives a fairly general overview. Our grant program, once again, provides for job retention and a request of up to $25,000 of grant funds. And 75% of those dollars would be available for payroll. And the remaining 25% of those grants would be available for other general operating expenses, such as rent, utilities, and insurance. Our Jobs First loan program provides for loans of up to $50,000 at zero interest. Part of the application process, we have two pending loan applications in the queue. That's a good sign, that's an indication of some job creation efforts that's on the horizon despite what's happening with the impacts of COVID-19. The next update is focused around our Accessible Eaterys program. This program was developed to allow restaurants required to reduce their usable interior dining areas to meet social distancing requirements to access private sidewalks or nearby parking spaces for expanded dining. The Accessible Eaterys program provides for a 60-day temporary outdoor dining permit to allow the expanded dining areas. The application process was deployed last Thursday. Our Office of Economic Development team has been proactive in outreach to our local restaurateurs and our shopping center owners to share the information about this new temporary outdoor dining permit program. Both my planning team and the building official are on hand to assist each of our applicants with an expedited review and preparation of their site plan to address their future or potential implementation of an outdoor dining area. We are also in the midst of finalizing the guidelines with further detail for each of the restaurant applicants to understand in further detail. And that is being incorporated as an addendum to our Business Resource and Resiliency Plan, and will be updated sometime tomorrow. In addition, the Office of Economic Development is also facilitating a Zoom conference call tomorrow at 3 o'clock to share information and processing about the Accessible Eaterys program. We invite all local garden growth restaurants and property owners to submit their interest. Please feel free to connect to Planning@ggcity.org if there's interest in participating on our Zoom call tomorrow. And that's Wednesday, May 27th at 3 o'clock. We would be happy to extend and Zoom invitations to our local garden growth restaurateurs and our shopping center owners if they have additional interest in learning more about our program. Again, please send your inquiry to planning@ggcity.org. In terms of the application fee, it is approximately $150. That's broken down to the planning application process of $100, and the building permit issuance fee of $50. For those outdoor dining requests that encroach onto public right-of-way, an additional encroachment perme of $100 would be assessed. Normally, this would be a $250 fee. It is recommended that this fee be reduced. So to process the permit for a temporary outdoor dining permit, it could range anywhere between $150 to $250. In addition, staff is also working on one additional resource to our business community. With the guidelines that have been presented by the state, the preparation of a work site specific plan has been recommended for all businesses that are reopening as part of this transition into stage two and ultimately to stage three and four. We have developed a template, a three-page template that would be a fillable PDF document for our local garden growth business community to plug in their information relating to their specific work site specific plan. It includes general information about their business, please identify who you are, and then who would be the point of contact in case there are any future inquiries relating to COVID-19 and who would be responsible for that plan. It also identifies specific employee training that has been undertaken by that specific business that has reopened, and also any implementation of any physical distancing that has been deployed, whether it's signs, partition, placement of tables. If it's in a restaurant, very strategically placed to maintain social distancing. And so it also includes a section for the business to include their cleaning and disinfecting protocol. So this was intended to provide a template to our business community as working through the pages of guidelines for each of our respective industries can be overwhelming for a small business. We wanted to make sure that there's a resource for them to be able to prepare the plan and being in compliance with the state and local county guidelines. This concludes my report, and I'm available if you have any questions.
That was wonderful. Thank you, Lisa. Any questions or comments?
George Brightigan?
Mr. Mayor? John O'Neill?
George, please go ahead first, and then John next.
So, you know, I'm really in support of helping our restaurants out, and I think this is a nice first step. I do have a couple of concerns. One, is there a deadline for this? I can see, you know, if we're issuing permits and there's no expiration date, so to speak, there could be conflicts with other retail establishments. Like, let's say I'm an owner of a belt, a leather shop, and I want to put some of my wares out on the sidewalk. You know, my argument would be, well, how come you're letting the restaurant put their tables out there, but I can't put my belts or my boots out there? So I think we should have a deadline firmly in place on these permits, saying they're good until, you know, whatever date that might be. Also, on these plans that get submitted to the city as far as their health plans, you know, what kind of protective measures that they're doing. I think you said it was a three-page PDF document. Who approves that? Who's reviewing it, and who's going to be responsible for approving that? And does that pose any liability on the city if we have a city official approving that, and then somebody happens to get sick? Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Brightigan. Members of the City Council, the two questions about the deadline. The application is a 60-day window. So at the end of the 60-day period, it is subject to the implementation of the local emergency order in place. When that is lifted and no longer in effect, the temporary outdoor dining permit would expire. So we have built in a 60-day window. We will certainly continue to recommend renewal of the permits if the local emergency order is in place. And at the end of each 60-day review period, we want to ensure that each of the restaurants are in compliance with what was originally approved. They have not added any additional tables. They have maintained the appropriate social distancing and have followed all the requirements. In terms of the approval of the workplace, the work site specific plan, this is not a document that's approved by the city. This is established by the state and as part of their guidelines for industry reopening. So it is each industry, office, manufacturing, dining, retail, limited service, each has a guideline that's established that ranges anywhere between six to 10 pages for each of their respective categories. It is up to each of the businesses independently to establish their own. So we, as the Office of Economic Development team, to assist and streamline each of our businesses to prepare their own respective worksite specific plan, we summarize the requirements and place it in a template for them to use. So we have just created a template for them to create their plan. Each plan is each business and their responsibility to prepare and have it available on-site. I don't have the answer in terms of who approved and reviews that. I can certainly look into that a little bit further and provide that response to the council once I have that information.
Thank you, Lisa.
I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Thanks.
John, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, just a question. I have had some inquiries lately, this to be regarding community groups, nonprofits, organizations, let's say the Elks, the Women's Club, the Kiwanis. All these groups have usually monthly meetings. I think it falls under stage three. It's hard to find anything on the websites regarding these groups. And they do have monthly meetings and executive board meetings, and they're usually over 10 people. Could you clarify for me, would that be stage, something in stage three? Or where can I go to find that direct information? Because I was having trouble finding it.
You know, I would have to look into that a little bit further. I'm not sure if Omar may have.
Yeah, I was going to say, Lisa.
Where that may fall under.
Yeah, I realize that you're economic development, and that's necessarily not it. I'm assuming the executive order still is in place with a group over 10 for nonessential. So, yeah, if anybody can help me with providing that information back to these groups, because they're asking me when they can meet, and I'm like, I'm trying to find it on the state website, and it's not really clear about those specific groups. So I wonder if we can help them out a little bit.
Hi, guys. Let's let Omar chime in here for a minute.
Yes, Councilmember O'Neill, members of the council. Yes, these assembly-type uses are stage-three uses. And so they will not be able to meet until stage three. I will look into the state's guidance, and I will forward that information to you once I retrieve it.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from Lisa? Or if not, then we'll move on to Patricia?
Nope.
Omar? Oh, sorry. Okay, Omar next.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Omar Sandoval, City Attorney. Before you, as an action item that we would like the City Council to approve, which is to ratify the city managers acting as director of emergency services, Executive Order Number Three, issued on May 21st, 2020. That was Thursday. Participation of the county submitting a plan to the state of California for expedited stage two, everyone's calling that stage 2.5, which basically allows restaurants to open with some limitations. The city manager issued this executive order that basically relaxes the outdoor dining requirements under the municipal code and temporarily suspending those municipal code requirements and authorizing the Department of Economic and Community Development to provide permits to allow restaurants to set up dining outside of their facilities in order to expand into either sidewalks, which is part of the public right-of-way, or into parking lots or other private areas that are outdoors. Our municipal code does allow some outdoor dining, but it does have a lot of regulations and requirements, such as, not temporary, but permanent barriers. And so the Community Development Department has also worked and put together some permit requirements and some guidelines as well, including ADA accessibility requirements in order to allow for this to occur. So before you is this executive order. We would like the City Council to review it and to basically approve it. That is my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. By the way, I'm forgetting to state that this executive order automatically expires when the local emergency is lifted. So it's not forever. It's only during this COVID-19 limit. It's only during this COVID-19 limited local emergency. That's my report.
Great. You don't need any kind of action from us, do you? Or you don't?
I think we have to approve it.
To approve it, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thus, how it says, "action item," in parentheses next to the item. Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Or can I get a motion in a second?
I'll move it, George.
I'll second.
Motion in a couple of seconds. City Clerk, please call vote.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dujun?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloppenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Great, thank you. Now, we will move on to a finance update from Patricia Sung.
Great, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. This is Patricia Sung, Finance Director. This is the fourth update we're providing you in regards to the financial impact caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. As mentioned in the previous updates, no experts can put a quantitative assessment on the economic impact of the pandemic as of yet. In the last update, I've provided you with two additional scenarios, one for a worst situation and the other assumed the worst. During the past two weeks, we have obtained new information from hotel operators, and consensus amongst them is even worse than what our worst situation that I provided to you last meeting. Therefore, we are updating our worst-case scenario today. I hope I have better news to deliver, but this is what we have so far. First, as a routine, let me update you with our most current damage assessment. As of May 21, we estimated total fiscal year-to-date damage is approximately $16 million, among which about $351,000 is indirect non-personnel costs. Total direct personnel cost is close to $955,000, including over 20,000 man-hours, of which 644 hours are in overtime. Among the total damage, over 90% is due to projected revenue loss. We estimate about $5.1 million in loss of sales tax revenue, which includes about $2.4 million in measure-all money, and $8.7 million in transient occupancy tax through June 30. I wanted to bring to your attention that under the current FEMA guidelines, only direct costs and overtime is reimbursable. In our case, only $393,000 qualifies for federal reimbursement, and FEMA reimburses us only 75% of this amount. Going on to the next slide. We presented a sensitivity study analysis in our last update focusing on two of the three major revenue sources of the city, sales tax and TOT. The analysis included a worst-case scenario and a worst-case scenario. Scenario one is a worst-case scenario comparing to our April estimates. For easier reference, we call it baseline estimate, and we're holding scenario one as is in today's update. Scenario two, however, is supposed to be the worst-case scenario. In our last update on May 12, we estimated TOT to have a 40% decline comparing to fiscal year 2018-19 actual. As mentioned earlier, our economic development staff has been working closely with our major hotel operators here in the city since the beginning of the pandemic. The latest consensus amongst the hotelers is that next year's TOT revenue would ramp up slowly from 15% occupancy rate in July 2020 up to 65% in June 2021, which translates to a 60% decline from fiscal year 2018-19 actual. Now, in our previous update, our worst-case scenario had projected a 40% decline and the delta of 20% equates to an additional $5.3 million to our estimated deficit. Additionally, in this update, we have incorporated the supplemental requests submitted for fiscal year 2021, which after careful review and discussion with requesting departments, only $594,000 were included in this update. With the updated TOT assumption and supplemental funding requests, our deficit is projected to be from $6 million, the baseline, to $20 million for next fiscal year. Moving on to the next slide. Similar to my last update, Slide number four presents the various balancing measures we have been exploring to bridge the anticipated gap under all three scenarios. The three broad categories of balancing measures are budget savings, cost reduction, and one-time sources. Let me go into a little bit more detail for each category. Slide number five, it's the first category, budget savings. Budget savings are not actual savings. It's a reduction to our original budget. We estimate a total of $2 million in budget savings, among which 1.9 is from vacancy. The city implemented a few cost-containment measures in the beginning of the pandemic. One of them is the placement of a hiring freeze, with the exception of public safety sworn positions and certain positions funded by enterprise funds. Removing budget for these frozen positions will generate about $1.9 million in budget savings or budget reduction. Please note that these positions are not eliminated from the council authorized position list, but are only temporarily removed from next year's adopted budget. The remaining $270,000 is anticipated from our contract with OCFA. The contract amount included in our adopted budget was an estimate done in spring of 2019. In February, OCFA provided us an update, and the amount is about $270,000 lower than our original estimate. The final numbers will be available to us by June 1, and any changes will be incorporated in our budget study session scheduled for June 2. Next slide. This slide shows the proposed cost reductions. We are proposing 16% reduction in fleet internal service charge. This is equivalent to $836,000. As mentioned in the previous update, we're not cutting the funding to our fleet management internal service fund's operations. The 16% is the charge to fund for the fund's replacements of reserves. This is a standard practice to fund for an internal service fund, and these replacement charges will be used for equipment replacement or other capital spending. As of June 30, 2019, the fund had a healthy reserve balance exceeding 125% of its assets' original acquisition costs, and the 125% mark is a typical benchmark for asset replacement reserves. And therefore, we're recommending temporarily suspend the replacement charge for one year to help balance the budget. We're also proposing a 25% reduction in temporary and seasonal staffing for certain recreational programs. These programs are anticipated to be suspended or scaled down due to the COVID situation. In addition, there will be a 30% reduction in travel, training, and conferences. A couple of previously approved and amended supplemental requests will also be postponed. These include the Main Street West Parking Lot Maintenance Project and a $20,000 fee study for the Community Economic Development Department to update their fees for permit and plan check as part of an effort for them to achieve full-cost recovery. Moving on to the next slide. This is the category, the last category, one-time sources. Besides the anticipated $3 million surplus from the current year, we're proposing the use of a couple of reserve funds set aside in the previous years, including $500,000 for potential property lawsuit and $2.5 million for replacement of fire equipment. In December 2019, the City Council passed our very first general fund reserve policy, which set aside a stability reserve for $22.5 million. This money is to mitigate financial risk associated with unexpected revenue shortfalls due to the changes in economic environment, such as the very crisis we're in now. The same policy also authorized the use of unassigned fund balance, which is not designated or restricted for specific purposes. Common practice is to use the unassigned fund balance first before tapping into restricted, committed, or assigned amounts. As of the beginning of the fiscal year, the city had about $24 million in unassigned fund balance. In order to balance our budget, we're recommending a one-time use of these funds. Currently, under the new worst-case scenario, we're anticipating to use up to $11 million of the unassigned fund balance. The use of one-time resources is the last resort before taking significant cuts or lowering service level to our community. We're very mindful of not to deplete all of our savings, yet we do not want to take drastic measures under extreme uncertainties that we're currently facing. We will continue to closely monitor the economy and be prepared to evaluate all alternatives and take the most appropriate action as we move into the new fiscal year. Next slide. I also want to give you a quick update on the recommended supplemental funding request for next fiscal year. They are in two general categories, amended costs and revenue generating initiatives. Under amended costs, we, one of the general fund subsidy for street lighting, we also have contractual obligation and mandatory training, total about $294,000. For revenue generating or cost-neutral items, they are staff augmentation by nature, including plan check, citation collection, and investment management. These items totaled just a little under $300,000. Moving on to the next slide. Last but not least, I want to share the items and initiatives that were put on hold due to the anticipated economic downturn caused by COVID-19. There were a total of $600,000 worth of supplemental requests denied, some of which we will revisit if economic condition improves. Our removal of funding for currently vacant position totaled about $2 million. Again, some key positions will be reevaluated throughout the year to ensure no interruption to operations. Some of the other major capital projects that will be postponed include the police facility expansion and street pavement program. In a study done in January this year, the cost of renovating or reconstructing the police facility to accommodate the expanded police workforce is between $72 million to $93 million. We were originally hoping to use some of the measure-all funds along with public financing options to get this project going next year, and obviously, this is going to need to be postponed. Recently, the city received its 2020 Pavement Management Program Report, a study result, not a report yet. Our new street condition had declined drastically during the past two years. Our current average rating fell below our policy standard, and we were required to pay a significant amount of funding to catch up with the deferred maintenance. Gas tax, Measure M, and SB1 funding will support about half of the funding needs. The other half will need to be coming from other sources, most likely the general fund. Our current estimate to bring our condition back to a policy standard over the next seven years is about $15 million from the general fund, and that amount is also included on this slide for reference purposes. This concludes my presentation. Most of the information covered tonight will be discussed in further detail during our study session on June 2. I appreciate your attention and welcome any questions.
Thank you very much, Patricia. Colleagues, any questions or comments? No? Okay. We'll move on to matters from council members. We'll go around the horn. George, anything?
Yeah, just one item. Yesterday was Memorial Day in honor of all the veterans. On Friday night, I was kind of put together on a short notice, but honoring our fallen, the local Garden Grove nonprofit headed by a Garden Grove resident by the name of Laura Herzog. They do the annual reading of the names of all the fallen veterans in Long Beach every year at the memorial wall. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, they weren't able to do that this year, and so they scrambled because they wanted to keep the annual tradition alive, unbroken, and they put it together at Laura's house. And I just wanted to thank Laura and honoring our fallen for bringing that to Garden Grove for the first time. Also, every police officer, there was a few veterans that came out and some active-duty military folks. The chief, Tom DeRae, made it out there and read some of the names. There was almost 7,000 names, so it took a little while. But just thanks for everyone for making that happen. I'm glad we were able to do that here in Garden Grove.
Cool, thanks, George. Mayor Protam O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say that, you know, I missed all of the festivities like we normally have this Memorial Day weekend, but I hope everybody had time to get with their family and kind of get together if they could, and hopefully everyone's healthy. Please just use common sense moving forward as we start to reopen things up. Wear a mask for your own safety, wear a mask for others' safety, and just use common sense. And I just wish everyone well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tuha Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that thank you to all those fallen heroes who fought for us. And at the same time, I wanted to echo regarding to we move into page-two reopening, but I want to share a little few thoughts of mine regarding to that. So, look around you, everyone, when you're outside your homes and when you walk or when you go buy groceries, because food's in the restaurant, how many people are wearing masks and how many people are not? That's including yourself. So, there is a strong data would suggest that at least 35% of all people who carry COVID-19 antibodies are symptomatic or mildly symptomatic, meaning that you have been or been currently infected or even, you know, yourself don't know it. I'm in the field, and I realize that mask testing, whether our real-time PCR testing or the serology antibodies testing continue to be challenges for our state, including our local, in the process of rounding up testing for not only high-risk individuals, but for the general public. But this is a separate topic for discussion. So, I'm cautious, everybody, that the virus does not discriminate and the severity of how each individual reacts, being infected by the virus, various individuals. Some were severe than the others, and then in what case might result in death. So, I highly recommend that we are wearing masks in public to protect yourself, and, you know, if you are COVID-19 positive, that you just don't know it, then it will protect the people around you, who you're contacted with. So, this is what I hope, and I, you know, as the person in science, I recommend everybody should wear masks once you step out the house. But I've been asked many people, take it very lightly and not wear masks in public. So, this is what we are in council with, and I continue to encourage everyone to wear masks so we do not stress our hospital system, and especially, we don't want to get into a period where urgent or vital care does not receive precious care. So, that's my point. Thank you so much, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you. Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
I would just like to echo the sentiments of some of my colleagues talking about wearing masks. If you're entering a business that has signage that indicates that you should wear a mask to enter, please follow that and don't make it an awkward and potentially disruptive situation for that business owner. Please respect their wishes to protect their employees and themselves as well as the public. And just as a reminder, we're at 71.4 self-response rate for Garden Grove, so please make sure to fill out the census, tell your neighbor, text friends, and remind everybody to fill that out, so that way we could make sure that for the next 10 years, we're getting the money that we deserve to get for all of our residents, and that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cloppenstein?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowie?
Nothing for me.
Okay. City Manager Scott Stiles?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, do we have anything to report out from closed session?
We don't have reporting out of closed session this afternoon.
All right. Thank you very much all for hanging in there, and we will adjourn the meeting for tonight. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.